Call our work session to order. Our first item is a budget development update. Michelle, do we have some members? Looks like we have excellent budget.
And there it is. It's just magic how that shows up. So thankful for us board for these meetings. Everyone, Michelle Morrison, District Financial Officer, here tonight with Jeff Jones. We're sharing information about our budget development. This is the second kind of three budget meetings that we're that we have set up for this year in our development calendar. And so that's what we are bringing to you tonight. We have invited all of the budget committee. I can't see who is all online.
Yeah, Ian Person, this is Deanna Klein and Michael online.
Michael, wonderful, okay. We also have Stephanie Condor on the budget committee. And we have, we did get an application from Kim Strelchen to, and we'll see that further in the regular session for appointment. We extended our budget committee openings through the 17th. So the two vacancies and we had one application. And we're super excited that about Kim rejoining us.
So even after Kim is on the agenda, you're still one available?
There's still a position three is still vacant and it, the term ends in 2024. So we will continue to keep that application space open. I think for this budget cycle, it's going to be challenging to get someone spun up, but I'm really happy to do that. Always excited to talk about budget. All right, so advance the slides, please. So in January, we reviewed the budget development process. We talked about our current year budget status. And then we did a really high level outlook by a major fund in terms of what we were expecting to see as we move into the new biennial. And we also talked a little bit about legislative contingency planning. And we're going to dig into that a little bit more in a minute. Our agenda for this evening is really looking at our SIA funds. What has been ongoing versus what the investments are going to be and how that's going to come to you in the form of integrated guidance document in March with alignment to our strategic plan. Travis and I will talk a lot more about that at that time, but the specific items are laid out for you this evening. We have our SR3. We have are going into our final year with those funds. There's a little bit of a tail in through September 30th, 2024. But for the most part, it's really going to be focused and need to be spent down in the upcoming year. And then we're going to talk about the tiered biennial budget gap that we're looking at. There's depending on what level of funding we get from the state, if the state's full. So those are the things we're going to talk about tonight. Please advance. So this is the preliminary outlook slide again, and it just kind of gives a high level overview of what we're expecting to see in terms of the expenditure side of the equation. And this rolls across all funds. So whether it's an operating fund, special revenues, which are those targeted grant dollars or bond debt service or end debt service, we have specific projection numbers that we give in terms of the estimates based on historical records that we have. So we don't look back at just one year. So we will overlook some of the spikes. We have a five-year expenditure trend that we look at to kind of like soften that out and make it more realistic. Okay, so let's just jump right into the student investment account. These colors we've seen off and on over the years as we've looked at the different areas of investment under this grant. One is class size. We combine that with case load in our planning. So that anything that's an investment there is blue. Instructional time is pink or red. You'll see an ink red as well. Well-rounded learning is green. And then our student health and safety bucket is in yellow. And so there's a note there that SIA provides $6.8 million of investment in new things for students out of a $15.5 million grant. So that goes back to that original intent of the grant. We just want to be transparent with the new investment. All right, please advance. The student investment account expansion over time. So this is a slide I think we've shared before, but really just adding in that 2324 column and focusing on what the projections are, what we're anticipating in each area of spending. You can see that the original estimate estimate that this could receive from the Department of Education was over $16 million. And as we went into the pandemic period, that was greatly restricted. There was a lot of uncertainty in the economy and what the state would be able to support. So it took quite a dive in 2021 and was not restored in that year. But it was fully funded with some revised calculations. But it was fully funded beginning in 2122. And we're anticipating that it will remain fully funded moving forward. So the totals that you see here, if you would like to hop online and look at the information on the ODE state site, our allocations are a little bit different. This excludes our indirect rate that we can apply to cover some of the overhead costs associated with this large of the grant. And then also our pass through to city. We will offer that and they have to do their planning in this alignment as well, but that's excluded. Any questions so far? I feel like I'm going to read them back.
Obviously, I'll make a note at the end. I know like our slight goal with our union partners is ratified well after it expires or whatever. So you know, looking at our forward-looking costs, when, when do we start that up again, reminder?
We'll start that up next year. Next year, 2324 is the final year. Okay, so we will be pulling up our sleeves and starting moving on that. We do tend to kind of project our cost based on an average increase over time. But we watch attrition, we watch growth in our demographics for staff to kind of get that as close as we can as we go along through that process. So it's coming. Not as exciting as budget, but it is, it can also be spicy. All right, so if we move forward just a little bit more. So this is a slide that shows again, we kind of have this dual tone, right? Versus kind of those muted colors to indicate the muted colors were things that we weren't doing prior to the student investment account. And we continued because they were eligible under that grant. And the bright one amount indicates like what's new, what's new in the areas that they are. So the yellow again represents student health and safety. The red is additional instructional time. Green, both colors represent expansions and well-rounded learning. And then blue is class size and ease load reduction. So those are the investments. Please advance. From this point forward, I'm really looking at student investment account as a total grant altogether and no longer parsing out what was an investment versus what is current service level. It doesn't, our integrated guidance and our planning doesn't require us to do that. And it just kind of adds a level of confusion when I'm talking internally to staff about it. So with your blessing, I'd like to roll forward just with a four-color pie chart. And that's how you'll see it represented in both our budget and our integrated guidance. Where's better, okay. Thank you. So this slide represents again, current service level items. These are the things, and there's some big tickets in there that we have been able to maintain. Thank you, student investment account. We have class size reduction, teachers, counseling and mental health services to students. We have some early intervention assessments that we, that we can pay for under this grant. A lot of student health and safety, especially as we were coming out of the pandemic period. That was a huge focus for us at that time. With both student investment account and SRA funds, we differentiated in our planning, knowing that student investment account would be ongoing and SRA funds would be ending. So those supplemental supports are more, are living more in the SRA grant right now. We have a recruit and recruitment retention process which is very critical to us. It's, that's been a big focus of our work around diversification of our staff. And then a lot of educational assistance and licensed practical nurses. So that's, that represents 16 classified FTE. I took a lot of the FTE detail out of here because I wanted to focus on the what and not the how many folks. But it is important that even if their service is represented here, this grant is paying for a lot of staff. Please advance. So as we begin to kind of hold in those investments, these are the things that we are currently funding and intend to continue funding out of the student investment account. We have synergy, team member and inclusion specialists to help us with our new schools model. Our high school student workers are funded out of here $50,000 towards internships and work experience. We have elementary school arts and engagement. And that is kind of expanded a little bit to include right brain, some ONGZ work that we're doing, and then chess for success. Before and after school programs, really focused on title schools. That's a partnership we have going with the city now. And there's, we're, have kind of a tiered plan for that in the longer term as they're kind of withdrawing a little bit. If there's support, our goal is to continue to serve as many students as we can as long as we can. We have some high school CTE teachers, youth development coordinator, a whole lot of counselors, social workers, psychologists, mental health specialists. Again, a focus on student health and safety. And then halfway center staffing. So those are all additional things that we were able to bring to the district students because of this grant. Please advance. We have, thank you. Great. And then we, this is the final list of things. And again, moving forward, it'll be all one big long list. We changed our middle school daily schedule in order to offer additional supports for students, make room for some interventions and electives in that age group. And we'll continue to fund staff using student investment account dollars on that. We have an education liaison that's a digital navigator. And we're doing outreach to make sure that our families are able to access supports for their students in learning with our one-to-one digital initiative. We have student support wellness counselor, non-title, so that's non-federally funded wellness center staff. So we were able to expand that. We have a district lead nurse to coordinate the work of all of the nurses and make sure that they are where they need to be to benefit their students. And then finally, for the well-rounded education component of this, we are funding the biannual cycles that we have bargained with both groups out of this grant. Any question about student investments, student investment accounts? Well, yeah, because this is likely what you'll see in the integrated guidance alongside the other grants that we're moving forward in, I think, March.
Do our student investment account, yes, student investment account reports, does that go to anybody else but us or do? Is there any requirement for every district to provide this? And that's a.
Yeah, yeah, that's pretty typical of, of grant programs from the state. They want them to be targeted and planned at an exceptionally high level and reported on an exceptionally high level. So Travis and I and Kristy Woodard in our office spend a lot of time doing the quarterly reports. And then there's a requirement for a separate annual report that's available on our website. We share all of that information that we use.
Patrick, you have a question? I need to do a couple of things. So on, on the current service level item, it says student success coaches are coded as part of the health and safety. Is that graduation coaches or some other type of code?
Let Travis speak more to that. It's more or anyone. Francesca, it's more of a behavioral support is my understanding.
The student success coaches help with the elderly, social, emotional, and they also do have components of instructional support as well. But it is to create just a well-rounded experience for kids. So they're supporting teachers, supporting students. And previously, we had them shared one to three schools. And this allows us to have one to two schools. One person per two schools, sorry.
Okay, one person per two schools.
Yeah. One for three was very challenging to make effective change in support.
As the principal, they're open for one to one.
And the principals will tell you they, yeah, they would love one to one.
All right, then we just call it student success coaches and sort of all the decisions I work.
Yeah.
Was that, did you have another question?
I did, but then I got thinking about this one. The other one left me, so I don't have to remember at the moment.
Okay, anytime.
Yes, the history that I had is originally we had just instructional coaches and worked with adults, but student success coaches with adults and students with like, to support more behavior than just academics. You know, like obviously there's an academic.
Good, everybody online, okay? Yeah. Okay. So now we're going to move away from student investment account. On the next slide, I'm going to give just a quick talk about our elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund three. So this was the third and largest of three rounds of funding that we got from the federal government passed through ODE schools in response to the COVID pandemic. And so when we received official notification on each kind of injection of funds and the timeline upon which they would expire, as leadership, we got together and started looking at a three-year response plan. And we called it our accelerated learning plan at this time. We're kind of going to rename that an investment plan. But really, it's, it's all about the accelerated learning as we came out of the crisis period. A lot of our early activities were in response to crisis. And then we've moved much more towards supplemental supports to help students learn. So that's our response to purposely, I don't know, a better way is we peanut buttered it out with the intent of making it last and providing as much stability in our system as we can, not knowing exactly how much state school fund support we would want to receive. That is definitely impactful in terms of just regular updates. So again, moving from student investment account, ongoing funding, things that we want to keep on a longer-term basis, SRA funds more short-term temporary. All right. So here's the gold star slide updated to represent the governor's recommended budget. I've only ever received one gold star from Mike Scott, so I'm just going to keep working on that.
We're nervous.
So you guys can see there's a purple rectangle kind of circling, squaring around the governor's recommended budget level in there. It is at 9.9 billion for the biennial. It's much, much better for the district than 9.5, which was the original number that came out of legislative fiscal to the governor's office as a recommendation. So that's greatly improved. However, at that level, we're still coming up a little bit short in terms of what we had planned to spend on our, with our SRA funds in the upcoming year. So we do have kind of a contingency plan, an early contingency plan in place to scale back from our SRA fund items that you're going to see here. But again, we'll do that with a lens on equity for students and making sure that it provides stability over the course of the biennial. Does, would anyone like a kind of an explanation of what this slide represents? In terms of state school fund, not enough state school fund adequate. So if we had $10.3 billion appropriated at the state, at the state level, we would be able to invest $15 million of SRA funds that we anticipate having. And currently where it sits, we can't quite do that. We have a spending plan in place for almost, for $7.9 million. And right now, we have $4.8 million of your. For every $100 million of state school fund, that's about $3.4 million to Hillsborough district. So if you're ever just hanging out with a napkin and you want to put it out a little bit, those, that's a pretty, pretty close thumbnail into the impact for us for the biennium. And that's a two-year period. For every $100 million appropriated to the state school fund, it's about $3.4 million to Hillsborough.
Oh, I sure heard the numbers right.
Yeah, for a two-year period. So that's important too, because when we are developing our budget, we are proposing for a one-year period. But as planners, we're going to think about the two-year planner, the period, because we know what our funding will be for both years from the state.
Michelle, what a question. I know, I know the governor, thank God, got to 9.9. I know it couldn't get 10.3. But I'm confused about the gray part that says 10.2. And then I know the 4.8 is, that's, that's our shortfall. But what's the 10.2?
So the 10.2 represents the biennial shortfall. The fourth is the opposite. The blue represents how much SRA funds we're going to be able to use for investments versus bridging that gap.
So this is the money we would have, and it just stinks.
Yeah, it's a lower percentage. Okay, I just couldn't, I, I wasn't tracking the 10.2. And I'm like, I know that, I know it goes something, to be honest.
Right, the 10.3 billion state allocations, what we would be as a district to continue all the programs we currently are doing?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. That's right.
Uh, it's a good time to just, I will say, I have already written all of our state legislators, well, the ones for our district to advocate for Hospital 2739. If you haven't had a chance to do that, and this is the thing you're interested in, maybe something you want to do from your district account, write our legislators. So Hospital 2739 is a bill before legislature that would change how CSL is calculated or influence how CSL. It really doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't serve us very well, the current system, to be arguing over what the actual number is to continue doing what we're already doing. So it's not certain legislative, well, it's not serving us well. We should be figuring out whether we have enough money to invest, keep stable or cut, right? In, in 2008, it was terrible. We had to cut, but it was, everybody knew we had to. So rather than having the actual discussion of, should we be, do we have the funds to invest? Just one we have or cut? We're having a discussion of what the actual number is. So Hospital 2739 would involve folks like Michelle in the discussion to create the current service level as opposed to just legislative fiscal office creating another. So just heads up, I would, I emailed the bulk of our legislators for our district to support that bill.
Thank you. I'm hoping there are, there are some logic things that we can do around education workforce too, that I'm hoping to see come out of session to help us. Thank you, Martin. All right, please advance. So this is the same information on the gold star slide, just in a table form. So you can see that currently in the third column, our SRA fund investments are preliminary based on our accelerated learning or our investment plan that we're calling it now. We currently have penciled out to spend $7.975 million in supports for students, and they're going to be itemized on the next slide. But as we move down, we can see at $9.9 billion of state school fund appropriation, our budget gap, and then kind of what that leaves us in terms of SRA fund investment. So we're looking currently at a three-point, almost $3.2 million reduction to the items that we have on the next slide. So that's just a heads up here. And if we need get to the $10 billion level, and this isn't current service level, but if we get to $10 million, that will give us 8.2 million of SRA for investments. Which would cover our current list, plus we have just over $200,000 more to offer in services. So very similar, just more tax-heavy. And as you can see, as we're moving down and we have a current service level potentially, there are lots of one-time strategies we can use with the remaining SRA funds there. So there are some ideas.
Okay, ask for that side of the question. On the 9.9 scenario, why is the back bill 11-6 in the table and 10-2 as a chart?
Yeah, that's a good question, Patrick. I may have an error there in my list in the table. So I can update that for you, but I think that I potentially moved a number from another cell. It should be 10.2. That's what aligns with our total amount that we have available for SRA fund.
No worries, I'm just trying to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, no, I'm glad you said the previous slide.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the previous slide, I thought it would, I thought it would say the 10.2. Does your mom ask about that?
Yeah, and he's saying that on this row next to 9.9 billion, it says 11-6.
It should say 10.
And it should say 10.
Yeah, too.
Yeah.
Good eyes.
Good eyes, Patrick. Thank you for keeping it honest on there. Okay, moving forward, this is the itemized list totaling 7.975 million in services. I don't think I need to read this. It's a, a lot of it is continuation from what we're currently doing. So just making sure that we have that at some level moving into 2324. And again, there's a note at the bottom that does say we will require a $10 billion state school fund appropriation to fund this, just kind of in round numbers.
Sure, what is directed? Is that our background?
Well, we're, as we were coming back to the buildings after COVID, we had been using Google Docs to trace and track people in and out of our buildings. And we found a tool that will do that and do some live background checks on our contractors and things. So that's another, a tool that was just kind of a good idea. We also don't really have a standard across the district for tracking that. We're just tracking volunteer hours so that gives us some visibility into that as well. Thank you. I know it sounds scary. It's not the last or after.
It was sort of.
All right, so meanwhile, another funds, just want to let you guys know what you can expect to see in our proposed budget document. We do have, we're phasing out bus leases. That's a strategy that's been in play for almost five years now. We were paying a significant amount of interest, even though it was at a government rate. It was still enough to make us want to move away from that. Just to get that clear, so we can continue replacing buses on the schedule without incurring any debt to do that. We're also continuing to target a stable levy amount in terms of debt service, so that's a focus for us. And so that fund will look very similar, not a lot of change. For our capital project fund, we're closing out Tammerack, Nauri, Oliver, Bond. So you'll see that decline. And what that looks like in terms of budget tables and numbers is like this. So just know that that's a big part of it. That's been an awful lot of spending in the community that we typically wouldn't be able to do. So that is in its last year. And you can expect a full report, I think, in May. I think the fund oversight committee is back in May. That may be changed, but that's the last I knew. An internal service fund. So again, that was set up for one-time money that's kind of earmarked for future spending. So whether it's tech replacement, stability for the system, that's something that we're, that you'll see in the document as well. And it may be, it may be kind of a bookkeeping way for us to track our, our strategy to bridge the budget gap. So we might notice something a little bit different in terms of fund balances. We may some, it's either going to be in a fund balance space or in a transfer to the internal service fund for a round-year period in order to stabilize versus go into the biennial. Again, depending on what level we're at.
Hey, Michelle.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Christine. I, I had a question about.
I, I had a question about, uh, capital stuff. Are we anticipating to get any sort of funding, um, coming from the feds through that, that infrastructure investment and jobs, uh, act at all? I know that last year when we had sort of talked about it, there wasn't a lot of information about, you know, whether it would impact schools or not. But I thought I'd understood that there was going to be money for, um, kind of like health and safety improvements, repairs and stuff like that to, to basically, to buil- to building. So I wasn't sure if that was something we were anticipating, any money for this next fiscal year or not.
We, we are-ish, they're coming kind of gradually as, as, um, kind of competitive grant programs.
Okay.
Through different agencies. So for example, we have the Department of Energy is offering a lot of programs, um, to kind of stimulate energy conservation projects. Um, that's kind of one avenue. Um, haven't really seen much else come through that we're going to capitalize on. Uh, we, we got the electric bus, and that was, uh, again, kind of a, a burst of ARPA funding. Um, but we haven't seen really the trickle-down that made available to us on a broad scale.
Okay, okay. It's something that, um, I know for the, the county, obviously, Washington County, we're looking at, um, a, a bit of different needs and stuff for that than the school, obviously. But, um, it's something that, uh, I was just kind of curious if we were going to see any money coming through for it. So, thank you.
Not, not directly, Christine, but our partners may see some.
Okay.
I know that we, we have some health and safety partners. Um, I, I think it's fair to say Virginia Garcia would be looking at dental grants or, um, those funds streams as they're coming down. But they really are focused more on health and safety and, and that workforce.
Okay, and I, I did hear, I thought that there was some money, and, and granted, this would be more like, um, uh, you know, cities and everything, that there was going to be money for like safe routes to school and, and stuff like that, that that, some of that money would be coming through different jurisdictions as well. So, um, okay, that, that's useful, thank you.
Thanks for the question. All right, we're wrapping up here. Um, and then just another, just a slide, this one just keeps showing up, kind of like a, a good penny. Um, the dates are current, and coming forward, we'll bring our proposed budget document. Um, Superintendent Scott will share his budget message on April twenty fifth. That's going to be a big night. And, um, then we will move forward towards the budget hearing and adoption on the plan and implementation on July first. So that's on process. Go ahead, our next steps. So, um, we're finalizing our contingency planning, um, working with leadership to do that. Focus on integrated guidance, again, working with, um, Travis and his team to bring all of our grants together into one coordinated document. It's really, um, kind of, uh, our new strategic plan is really the hub of the investments there. So, um, that's coming up, our proposed budget, and then, uh, hopefully approval, and then we're going to be going to the. All right. Special thanks to Jeff Jones for his leadership and making our proposed document fun and entertaining to read, lots of pictures.
We can ask questions along the way, are there any other questions?
I have a few things, but since we're running behind, I'll call it by email. You clarify your question.
Thank you.
Your enthusiasm for the budgeting process is appreciated. I would say I, I appreciate that when pandemic relief fund, we knew they were coming. I appreciate that our district was insightful enough to take a long-term view, like Nancy's. Often said, we are still dealing with the effects of the pandemic, and I'm glad we still have some funding left to address some of the mistakes. All right, thank you so much. Our next, uh, agenda item is a school resource officer update, and I think basically that discussion.
Yeah, uh, part of our, if you guys recall, part of our, uh, commitment, not only to the board, but our community, when we entered into the new S R O I G A, is that we would come and report, um, where our S R Os are spending their time, um, and update on some of our, our training aspects. So this is just the numbers from the fall. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, one more, thank you. Okay, so this is a similar, uh, chart that we showed, uh, last winter and at the retreat. This is a data summary report for all of our S R Os and the categories of activities that they spent their time, uh, as you can see. It totals, um, about, well, over almost twenty-three hundred hours, uh, for this last fall. Just in perspective, that's about six hundred more hours of activity than the fall of, uh, twenty twenty-one. Now, if you recall, that was our first fall, and we hadn't done a lot of our professional development yet. That took us a little bit of, of time to get organized. So I think this is probably more of a, a standard way that, uh, you'll see some of our breakdowns. But it is, it will be interesting to chart this over time. And, you know, we'll be able to look at the year-end, um, planning to bring back the year-end composite at our retreat in August, like we did a year ago. Uh, so you can see, uh, where our S R Os are spending their time. We will, uh, be posting this on the website for our community, be able to, sort of like we committed to. Uh, any questions on, uh, this chart before I go on to the next, uh, professional development? For members, have any questions about the numbers? Okay, uh, next slide, please. Okay, I know this is a little hard to see. Um, I do want to emphasize, um, how proud, I guess, I am, and the credit really goes to Francesca and her team. This is the S R O professional development that, um, we bring our S R Os into or our staff to train them on the way that we conduct business for students in our district. This is so incredibly unique. I have actually not really heard of this as we went through this process and the sheer number of hours. Um, so again, a lot of credit to Francesca and her team and other departments for scheduling this. Feedback from the S R Os has been incredibly positive. This has been something that I think initially there was, you know, some, you know, some unknowns. I don't want to say that there was anything negative, but there were some unknowns about the number of hours we were asking them to do. And if you look at some of the categories, a lot of this is outside of police work. But what it really does is when they show up to an incident at school or they're in the school and administrators or teaching staff or whoever is referencing, uh, trauma-informed care or home visits or just go down, safety care training, they have a perspective on what this is and how our schools operate. So I, uh, I, I think we're fortunate, uh, again, that, uh, the S R Os and H P D and the sheriff's office have, you know, wrapped their arms around this. I think there's been some good, uh, discussions, uh, that have happened, even when something, um, happens in, in the police world where we can find the time for them to come and, and chat and discuss and spend time learning about what our district does. So this is very unique, I want to emphasize that. And just say that it's a point of, I think, we should have that as a point of pride for our partnership, um, as we came into this new agreement. Francesca, I don't want to put you on the spot, do you have any, anything to add? This is basically our training calendar. I think there might have been a date that we shifted that is pretty accurate, uh, for what we've done so far and what we have planned for the rest of the school year. Uh, next slide is just the question slide. Are there any, uh, questions that I can specifically answer about our training plan or the number of hours or what we're doing with our program?
My other question, you'd be sharing this information with the parent advisory groups?
You know, that's, uh, I, we can. I think we specifically put it on our website, but I don't know if.
They have, um, we're very careful when we do go into our parent advisory committees, because I think there is sometimes an assumption that they want our police officers to, law enforcement agents to come in and be, um, heavy in the situation. So we have gone ahead and presentation with our Latino, Latina, Latinx group. And I introduced them, and we set the stage for it. And then, um, our S R O Marco, who was there for it, was able to answer questions in a very holistic type manner, which was really helpful. So they are open to coming to others, and I know that, um, David is currently working on with Marco again, um, to bring him to the Black Village. Um, I'm not yet on whether or not the Native American or Alaska Native group will also.
Well, I think, I think I was thinking in form, in terms of, um, that was a very strong point of what the Black Village is pushing for, when we asked for reformation of all of this, and to have that training and to see that number, would I think help people understand that we have met that goal, we are heading in the right direction. You did do what we asked you to, does that make sense?
Yeah, so Nancy, what you're asking is us to specifically share the, the chart, the numbers with.
In December, after we met with our path leadership team, they did, uh, get a set of slides that everybody agreed to that they were going to take out. So you can do another one too, if you would like, maybe towards the end of the year. So they have the mid-year and then one towards the end of the year.
Yeah, I just, I just thought that this, this really dealt with what we were concerned about, uh, initially, both a few, three years ago, and you've done it. Doesn't end, it starts, but you did.
Just a, this is just a update in the process. I don't know if we ever arrived, we're just on a journey.
Other question? All right, I would say I, I remain very grateful to former Director Martinez and her input and involvement with the process, who's super determined, helping us get all this set up. So still remain grateful to that.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, if you want to, next up is an update. So the superintendent's, uh, position closed yesterday. Um, so, one central wonderful time that we have our consultants with us. Uh, this afternoon, uh, they shared a seventy-three-page report with Rose and put it in our area. I have not gotten through all seventy-three pages, but what I have gotten through is very insightful. Um, I'm sure they're going to share some of that, but I, so I, I'm guessing we're not going to go page by page through the, it's listed as a presentation, but we're not, we're not going page by page through that, are we? Okay.
No, sir.
All right. So, uh, uh, we can talk about this later, I'll let you go ahead and set the stage then.
All right, all right. Can you hear me?
We can.
Wonderful, thank you so much for having us here tonight to give you an update on the process, and it's going well. Um, yes, you did receive a seventy-three-page document. Um, we're still doing little tweaks on that, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We call that the educational partner report. We'll talk a little bit about, um, the interview schedule, just briefly. And we'll talk about a process for selecting some questions that I'm going to recommend. We've already talked about compensation and contracts, so I don't think we'll talk about that. And then maybe anybody, if there are any questions about moving forward, then, uh, we could certainly address those as well. Like to wel- welcome my partner, Maureen Wolf, welcome, Maureen, thank you. And Gustavo Valdériz would have been here, but he has conflicting meeting, conflicting meeting, and unfortunately can't make it tonight, but he will be there. So we had eighteen completed applications of that. Um, we are currently chasing eight people who are highly common and qualified. We're going to do a very thorough scrub down of them to be sure that they say, or they are who they say they are. And you'll be hearing more about those, uh, individuals and the entire pool on the meeting of the fourteenth. Uh, questions?
Interrupt you, but that was a point of discussion we had. So I guess less presentation, more conversation. Um, so we, we were, we discussed in our last meeting the possibility of conducting sort of unusually formatted meetings on March fourteenth. I think our initial calendar had us with a special meeting to do the review on the twenty-first. Are you suggesting we be ready to go on the fourteenth?
Uh, no, I think the twenty-first will be, that'll be helpful, because the fourteenth is a quick turnaround. So I was under the mistaken impression that the board wanted it to be on the fourteenth.
You, we'd probably prefer it if you can do it, but I mean, if it's unrealistic or unreasonable, we have set aside the twenty-first as an option.
Well, why don't we do this, uh, let me ask this question. Meeting the fourteenth, is that a regularly scheduled meeting, would be competing with a regular agenda?
Uh, so what we've discussed doing is, uh, yes, it is, we only have one board meeting regularly scheduled in March because of spring break. So the plan was to conduct our regular session and normal business at the outset of our meeting. Normally those begin at seven o'clock. Um, we were going to conduct that at the outset of five fifteen, and then try to minimize the amount of items on that agenda be done in maybe half an hour, and then come upstairs, move into executive session, excuse the cabinet, and just spend the next four hours with y'all, uh, working on this. So it is the date that we are known to schedule to meet. Um, and we have discussed, uh, formatting that meeting in a way to only have to come to the building or meet online once. If we do it on the twenty-first, I'm guessing it's all virtual, but yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, I think we can probably get it done by the fourteenth. Um, so let's plan on that, and if, uh, in discussion with the other consultants, if we're having trouble getting the data that we need to make sure that we present the, uh, the true picture of who these people are, then, uh, we'll get in touch with you sooner rather than later. But let's go ahead and tentatively, uh, confirm the fourteenth.
So Rose, would you be comfortable with the idea that we make the call by the seventh, a week before?
Yeah, I think so, I think that's reasonable. Have Rose.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking Rose if that's reasonable. She may say, no, it needs to be the sixth, the fifth, I don't know.
Sorry.
Um, I think that, uh, yeah, we're going to hold a meeting on the fourteenth.
We're going to have a meeting on the fourteenth either way. Just by the eighth, we'll be discussing the content, right? So that's our agenda planning meeting, the eighth.
Yeah.
All right, so if we make the call on the seventh, yeah, so if you could let Rose know by the seventh whether or not we can target the fourteenth for the, uh, extended executive session, discuss all the applicants, great. And if not, we understand, we have set aside the twenty-first. We, we understand that this is the most important job the board has to do. So I'm clearing it all, like.
I think Rose and I would probably put two agendas together, because we can't wait that long.
Yeah, sure.
And we could just slide it all back.
Okay, yeah. All right, thanks. You, sorry to interrupt, but.
No, it's all good, it's all good, great. Um, so let's talk a little bit about the, um, educational partner, uh, report. And Rose, can you put that on the screen, please?
Yes.
We might be able to. Just like the first couple pages, the executive summary? Is that good enough?
Uh, I'm not seeing it here on my screen, so not sure.
That's all you're thinking we need, right?
Yep, first couple pages is all we'll need.
Yeah. But here we go.
Here we go, okay. Uh, next page? That's a blank, next page? All right, so, um, so instead of going through all seventy-plus pages, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the thematic things that were brought up in many, many of the meetings. Uh, during the end of January and the beginning of February, four consultants from McPherson Jacobson interviewed staff, students, and educational partners. The following is the summary. So the first part is, tell us what's good about the community, which helps us with a fit, because that's what this process is all about, getting a good fit. Hillsborough clearly is a tight-knit community, a tight-knit and connected community. Uh, thank you, that's great. There are lots of amenities, parks, and libraries, it's a great place to live. Uh, there's a strong partnership between the district and local governments and businesses. Hillsborough is big enough to have the econo- economies of scale, but isn't so big or too big, uh, that it allows, it, that, isn't too big, that allows it to avoid some of the large controversies and problems from larger cities. Um, there are strong working bonds between community partners and private organizations. There's a lot of community engagement, engagement is, is from diverse groups, which makes us strong. Um, there's a lot of talk about diversity and how that really makes the community much stronger, working together. We're in a great location, close to everything, beaches, mountains, Portland, the forest, et cetera. So many of the advantages of a larger community and still being a small, uh, a smaller community. Many large businesses that are willing to work with the community and the district. Um, they have a, you have a strong economic base, and people feel that this is a safe place to raise families, families. families uh, and a place that respects differences. People honestly care about the community. That was evident in everything we every group we talked to, including the students. Next page, please. The good things about the district. Again, this is about fit and helps us with the vetting of the, of the candidates. A very progressive instruction wise, staff are truly centered on the students. That was very clear from all the different groups. People felt very good about the quality of your instructional staff, your licensed staff. Uh, there's a philosophy of servant leadership. And the comment was schools are not there to support the district office. It's the other way around. So that was a very clear and very important and somewhat unique. Hillsborough Schools Foundation is wonderful. They hold huge fundraisers and provide innovative grants to teachers. A lot of pride in that foundation. Um, and a lot of amazing work being done by those volunteers. Uh, collaboration is key. This is not a big ego place. People felt like my voice is heard. People feel free to call the superintendent, call people at the district office, and they get responses, they get connected. The district is data-driven. They value both qualitative and quantitative data. The district works hard on inclusion. Not all, not where they would like to be, but they're working on getting there. Student family voice are valued and heard in the district. A lot of people felt that they actually, the district actually wanted to hear from them and that they had a way to get connected to the superintendent or the other people in the district, including the board. Dual language is a big focus. I like this comment. We are the Reno of Oregon, the biggest little district. The students are amazing, open-minded and accepting. We were very, very impressed by the student representatives that we were able to interview. Very thoughtful, very articulate, and they had great ideas. Uh, the college and career pathways are strong and growing. The district has developed many partnerships, Intel, Kaiser, et cetera. We have a dedicated staff committed to the mission of serving students. Student apprenticeship programs are going well. Students like to see them get expanded. Uh, and the students were saying they were very happy that not only do they have things that they can work on, they can actually get paid for doing that. So they were very happy with that. The district works well with the unions and that is somewhat unique and it needs to be cultivated in the future, of course. The after-school programs are strong and have an equity focus. Um, the district does not have a huge fix ahead. Many districts are in a position where there is a big fix ahead. Hillsborough is not one of them. There are a hundred languages spoken in the district and many free and reduced lunch students. Our on-time graduation rates are almost the same as they were before the pandemic. Although that's also a, there's a negative, not a negative comment, but a need comment statement later on about graduation rates. Um, it's never perfect. There's a strong connection between the district, the city and the community college to support student pathways. There's a focus on SEL and a recognition that students have different levels of readiness when they arrive at school. District is intentional in honoring diversity and seeing it, and seeing it as an asset. Uh, the school board, the administration, the teachers are all very professional. The administration works well with the student body on policies and issues. Uh, the students commented that um, the student, I'm not sure, uh, superintendent uh, has a term for it, but it was a student advisory group. And they were very pleased to be able to uh, be part of that and share their concerns and thoughts. The, the district has a grow your own program that's unique and should be continued. Uh, we felt that was very uh, unique and very powerful to help those who work well with children or students to increase their knowledge and maybe their skillset, maybe even become teachers. Um, uh, can you page down, please, Rose? Thank you. What are the issues the incoming superintendent should be aware of as he or she comes into the district? Again, this is another thing about fit, making sure we find the right skillset and experiences. Students might graduate, and this is a comment from students, by the way. This is a, maybe not to be overblown, but I think it's important. Students might graduate but don't continue on a strong career or college path. Uh, the way it was stated by the students was, not sure that the adults are kind of aware of of that. And they also then linked it to the senior projects that they had to choose their senior projects before they really understand all the, they understood all the parameters. And they would like to have more information early on so that they could choose the right senior project because they get locked in. At least that's the way they felt. Uh, budget is always an issue and will always continue to be an issue. Uh, next page, please. The next superintendent will need to understand the trajectory of existing programs prior to trying new initiatives. And I think that's a very key piece for the next person. A lot of good things going on. Need to take time to understand and to see what's happening, what people like before change is made. Uh, the teachers appreciate consistency and that kind of goes to what I just said as well. Impacts of the pandemic still exist and both students and staff need support. That came from both students and staff. Um, I think students will say sometimes the adults think we're okay, that we're beyond it, but we're really not there yet. Mental health issues must be addressed. I think this is not only statewide. This is a national issue for students and young people at this point in time. You're hearing a lot in the news. Um, there are still equity issues to be addressed. The district will need a leader who will address the issues of change, changes from Salem. I think this is a concern how uh, things can be changed. Changes can happen from Salem, but the concern was we don't want to really change the good things that we're got, that, that are going on in the district. And they want to keep the needs of students first. That was a very positive comment. There's always a need for clear and timely communication. Dual language teachers uh, have expressed their feelings of burnout. Uh, they've, the comments were that they need more resources to support their programs. They feel like they're having to do a lot of developmental uh, projects, materials in the classroom, et cetera. I think it's a, it's a growing program and I think that's a common concern. But it's something that people need to be aware of and I'm sure you are. The teaching administrative staff does not reflect the student body. Active recruiting will need to be done in that uh, area. Uh, and that is a very common problem. The changes in direction of special education uh, will need to be addressed. Staff expressed a lot of concern about not having the skillset to be able to address the needs of the students coming into their classroom. Uh, the need for support staff and successful transition from where they currently are to where they need to be so that they can benefit all students. So there's a um, a trepidation about that. They embrace the idea, but they feel like they need support to make sure it is as successful as possible. Student behavior is an issue. Again, this is not just a, uh, issue for Hillsborough. This is a statewide, national issue as well and needs to be addressed. Compensation will need to be reviewed to ensure that Hillsborough stays competitive. In particular, this is coming from your, your uh, non-licensed staff where they feel that they um, may be falling behind and may need, that may need to be addressed by the next superintendent. Staffing shortages are an issue and that must be addressed as well. Preschool and dual language programs um, need to be expanded. Again, this is coming from staff. Um, and I think that they feel very good about both of those programs. Uh, collaboration needs to continue to be a priority. There's a little typo here that we're going to have to take care of. There is or at least there are ten percent of the students who don't graduate. How do we address that concern? I mean, it's impossible, I think, to get a hundred percent uh, of all the students to graduate. Certainly that would be the goal. But the comment was, what can we do to reduce these even high graduation rates that we have? Professional development is coming back and highly supported by your staff from the decline during the pandemic. But again, it needs to be strongly supported. Thank you, Rose.
Uh, the characters. Before we go to the next section, uh, I know we started five minutes late with y'all, but what else do we need to do tonight with you besides have you read all the comments in here?
You know, I can, we can move on. I don't have to read the rest of this. But I think that what we need to do is have a little discussion about the path forward.
There you go.
Shall I move to that right now?
Yeah, let's do that, please.
Okay, that's fine. Sorry about that. So what I'd like to do is to talk a little bit about the interview process. It's my understanding that the board wants to have an educational partners interview team. And to that end, what you're going to need to do then is to uh, select questions for the board, for the um, educational partner interview team and potentially for a Zoom interview as well. And the way we.
Discuss that for the finalists, not for, so what, what? So you're, you're working on vetting eight, it sounds like. Um, the, I guess the, the original plan that we discussed was that you would present us with these eight. We would try to have brief conversations with the eight and get down to a set of finalists, two or three. Um, so I, I think the educational part, I think that anybody outside of the board having conversations with applicants would only be in the finalist stage.
That's correct. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that, yes. And then we'll have to decide on how you want to interview them or have discussions with them. Uh, that larger group to whittle it down to the smaller group, whether that's going to be Zoom, you're going to have the standard questions. We can provide you with some questions, which is kind of where I was leading uh, to. I can send you a set of sample questions that the board can look at offline um, to kind of, kind of move this thing forward. If the board were to select a question B for board, question C for community, and then question or maybe Z for Zoom, that way we can have a consensus of around the questions that the board would like to ask. And then we can put that together for the board's review. If the board were to take those questions, take a week, select the questions, get them back to Rose, get them to me so I can develop that consensus and then get it back to the board. So they take a look at what, what they have put together. If you want to write your own questions, that's certainly fine. If you want to tweak the questions, that's acceptable as well. But to kind of help move things along and not reinvent the wheel, we would be happy to provide you with those um, those sample questions. Um, I'm assuming that would be okay? Is that? Yes?
Yeah, I'm looking around the room. I can't see my colleagues online, but I think I'm seeing headlines in here that that makes sense. Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'll get that out to Rose tomorrow and then she'll get that to you and let's take about a week to get returned to her and we'll get you um, some documents back to take a look at and to tweak. We still have lots of time, but I wanted to um, uh, sort of move on that process.
So would be a tendency for us to try to talk with all of them on the, we're, we're we're not doing that on the fourteenth, right? We're just, you're, you're going to tell us how you got from eighteen to eight or six or whatever it ends up being and discuss each of those six in detail. Is that about right?
That is correct. You will see a video of them. You'll see their paperwork. You'll be able to see, view all that material in a Dropbox account. The district will have um, possession of those materials. They'll be ours in our Dropbox and you'll be invited to view them. Um, and then you can ask questions to us. You'll see the videos. We'll talk about what we found from our reference checking. And then the board hopefully will give us direction to move forward on um, that first tranche of candidates that you want to meet with.
Will we have access to the written materials before the meeting or will we only be seeing it for the first time during the meeting?
No, you'll have them uh, in advance of that meeting, hopefully. See, the fourteenth is pretty tight, but we'll, we'll give you as much advance. We'll give you as much advance uh, um, uh, access to the material as we can.
Okay, so, okay, so back up just a moment. If, if, if we're pushing it for the fourteenth, we, that means that we have to finish our questions. We'll use your suggestions as a springboard for the questions. We tweak, we change, we do all of that next week. That would give us to the tenth?
I don't think we need that.
We don't need that then. We don't need the questions for them because we're not interviewing. We're just walking.
That, that, okay, that's right. This question, okay. So that's what I was getting confused and I apologize. I'm just trying to track it. So the questions are really for the end, the final interviews that might be anywhere from two to four candidates.
I would, I would bet the question to be for the six weeks. So I think what we decided, and we could change this, but what we discussed was that they would help us get from, turns out to eighteen to six or eight.
Right.
We would want to have a short conversation with those six or eight to get down to two. At one point, there was discussion where they would, they would call the eighteen to two. And we would only ever speak to two. I think I was a little uncomfortable. I think I got tons of people a little uncomfortable with that. So um, I think their, their initial proposal was they would go from eighteen to two or three. And then we would only speak with those two or three as finalists. I think we as a group sort of decided what we'd like to do is help us get from eighteen to a second set. We would have brief conversations with them. So I think the questions we're discussing are for the brief conversations we have with them to determine the finalists.
So if we're having a real conversation, that's not chain push. That's.
Yes.
Four, three.
Right? Steve, that sound right?
I wasn't sure you were talking to me. Yes, you're going to have to have some questions for your preliminary conversation. We can, we can do that. We can signify that question as question Z for Zoom. Uh, whether they're, they're in person or they can actually zoom in to talk to that larger group. Um, and then, but you won't have to have it completed by the fourteenth, but shortly after, depending upon how soon you want to meet with those individuals, that larger interview team, group.
And, and I'm guessing those would be spread out over time or would we try to do them all in a single week? So I don't have the calendar for you handy.
It's going to kind of come down to how many and how long you want to, how much time you want to spend with them? If you want to spend an hour with each candidate and you had five, it's a five-hour block. You know, that's, you know, the.
I don't think we're down about an hour. I think we're talking about fifteen minutes, right? Like well, oh, half an hour?
Yeah, half an hour might be more realistic.
We can decide this on the fourteenth.
Yeah, we can decide something, but I want to make sure that we have a sketch of that completes us on the right time.
I don't feel like I want to wait till the fourteenth to make this decision. Like and you guys break me if I'm wrong, if I'm, if I'm being wrong, you can just say it.
Yeah. So I mean, it feels like somewhere around a half an hour with whatever six, eight, we decide we want to chat with. And uh, Stephen, do you think it's a it's likely, so we have to make that an executive session, right? So you have to publish it. Is it likely that we would do those in a row or would we do them over the course of the six people, six days, and we have to publish six executive sessions?
Well, I think if it's only thirty minutes, you wouldn't want to do that. I think that would be um, that would be thrifty. I think, you know, if you have six people and you have thirty minutes, it's three hours, you could do that in one session, one, one meeting. It would take you four, four and a half hours.
And that's a thing that seems manageable with your experience with applicants?
You could do it.
Okay. Would you, is, is this the kind of situation where you will facilitate it with us?
Happily uh, available for that.
Based on the questions that we preset for everybody?
Yep. What you want, again, you want to ask the same questions of all the candidates in this larger tranche.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay, so we, we plan for about thirty, twenty to thirty minutes with when you go from eighteen to six or we're just saying six, whatever that number is. We get to there, then we schedule twenty to thirty minutes with each of them, which is going to be about a three-hour meeting for all of us to get to know them. We have to choose in advance what those questions are going to be so that everybody gets the same question and that we get a level set response, right, to judge that by. We provide them with that information, our feedback, and then they make a decision to go back to, to.
Yeah, we may have a, we may have a committee discussion that night and we're all done about who we think the finalists are, right? I, I if, we can take, take the pulse of the room at the time. It'll just be board members. So we can figure out if we feel like we have an idea or do we need to like come back in a couple of days? She didn't have a question?
Yeah, quick clarifying question for Stephen. Um, you had mentioned labeling a question Z for Zoom and a couple others. What were those, what were those labels?
Well, uh, when I send the questions, I'll send the instructions and just saying B for board. Uh, if the board interviews, well, board will interview, B for board interview question, C for the community stakeholder educational partner group, and then Z for Zoom. Those are just the ones that I picked out. Uh, and, but I'll have a little uh, instruction paragraph.
Got it, got it. And that would be for the final, final candidates.
Uh, it actually is going to be for the, the larger group that we were just talking about as well. That, they could be the Z questions. And then the B and C will be for the finalists.
Okay, got it. Okay. Um, and if it's, I don't know if anyone has the timeline handy, but that would be certainly helpful if, if someone would pop it in the chat or or something. Cause when, when is it that we need to have the, the final two by or the.
That, that was, that was what I was just discussing with Rose. Uh, I think we set aside the week of the seventeenth to have in-person conversations. to have in-person conversations with the finalists. Or if they are not local, to provide transportation and accommodation for them to come to Hillsborough and talk with us in person. So we said that the week of the seventeenth to have April seventeenth.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Mark, so unless I have, Rose, are you looking at the calendar? Because I have week of, I have week of April third is round one, week, week of April tenth is round two, week of seventeen selecting.
Yes. Okay, okay.
So we would talk to the six or eight candidates sometime on the week of the third, April third. And then go from that to the finalists, two or three for the week of April tenth.
Yes.
Yeah. So you've buffered yourself because you guys may know by the end of the tenth, right? What, who, who you're looking for.
Right. So that, that's the other sort of variable we discussed when we were setting calendar was, uh, are we working this around board meeting? Are we, so like, we, uh, we, I still haven't got an acceptable answer. I'm like, can we all really go to dinner with the person legally? So.
Well, if you, if you, if you, uh, declare an executive session and that's just part of the executive session, you can do it.
So then, so if I'm understanding this correctly, on the fourteenth is when you will bring us the, the six candidates. That seems like a lot of time between the fourteenth of March until the third of April that we already know who those candidates are. And if we're waiting until the third of April to start talking to those candidates, what are we doing from the fourteenth through the third?
Yeah, we, we had, we had picked the week of the third because we were thinking we were going to have this discussion on the twenty first. And then the week of the twenty seventh, the spring break where everyone saw.
March.
Yeah. Oh God, right. Yes, sorry. Yeah.
Thank you, Lori, because we were definitely getting our March and our April interview.
No.
So yes, if we end up just doing it on the twenty first, it's still possible with that timeline. So if you feel like it, 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 it does feel a little bit longer when we talk about trying to go on the fourteenth. I think it is easier schedule wise for all of us to just go on the fourteenth out of nowhere. The day we, nobody expected to do more.
Um, okay. Her name is question, when is the baby due?
April third. No, I feel like she'll come early. So who knows? But we're, we're gearing up for April third.
All right. So we're getting bogged down in the calendar and we need to get downstairs soonish. All right. So we'll discuss the calendar and timeline when we know more about the fourteenth and twenty first. Uh, what else do you need us to help you figure out today?
That's it. Do you have any questions? Any other questions for us? Oh, Maureen has her hand up.
Yeah. So you guys, I'm putting my board hat on. Mark, I'd like you to be clear with Steve on your expectation of when those packets should be to the board for review. Cause that's what's got me a little bit. I appreciate McPherson Jacobson's thorough, thorough process to, to check references and vet out. And I also respect the fact that you all will want time to reflect on those candidates and read through the packets. So I just want to make sure that we understand that drop date for you all. Um, and that that all makes sense.
The Friday, the Friday before the Tuesday discussion. So if we go on the fourteenth, that's the ten of March.
And then you guys are good for the weekend.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So yeah, so if we, if we're, if we're good for the fourteenth, you would give us the information on the ten? If we're going on the twenty first of March, then you give it to us on St. Patrick's Day, according to my calendar. Makes sense?
Yep.
And then it is kind of a long time between the fourteenth and the third, but spring break isn't there. So, um, that gives us we, yeah. So?
The baby will be there.
Oh.
Patrick, yeah, I was just going to mention to Dr. Louder, um, if you can provide us with, when you provide us the candidate details, um, a background on their methodology, just a short summary, both key points of how you, how you chose the candidates and that we can review in advance of the meeting, then that's less we have to talk about after the meeting. So that'd be much appreciated as well.
You're talking about the full applicant list?
Just how you went, how you, how you narrowed it down and what processes you went through. So we have a background and we can ask any questions about what's this or that.
That's a good point, guys.
Sure. It'll, it'll go to, um, stability, uh, longevity. It'll go to, uh, work history. Um, there's, there are always a few people who are just simply not qualified. There, like, for example, we have one applicant who is currently a teacher, um, which is admirable, but doesn't have the kind of experience in administration. Um, another gentleman who is a perennial applicant who isn't qualified, but he applies for everything we have or post. So, but we'll talk about that. I'll give you a short synopsis of all those.
That's very insightful. I didn't even know a parent like that existed.
I'm not feeling good, Dr. Louder.
I'm sorry, you, you what?
I'm not feeling good right now.
Oh, no, there are these, the people we're getting are highly competent and qualified. It's all good.
Yeah. Outstanding candidates, outstanding candidates.
Okay.
Always have some, it's like with any data, there's always chatter around the outside. And then you, you look for the, the themes and the important pieces and it's there. And that's what we have here. We have some very, very good people. And that's what I said, we have eight people that are highly competent and qualified at this point, and we're following up on those. And in the end, we need one.
So we're, so we're able to go on the fourteenth to be able to complete our thorough process on the fourteenth straight. If not, we prepare two agendas. So the, the flavor of our next board meeting will change based on that. If we don't go on the fourteenth, we'll go on the twenty first with a special session. Um, which will just have a conversation with the consultant virtual.
And we'll do everything possible to let everybody know A and A B.
Yeah, so as we, so as we know more, we'll make sure everybody knows. Yeah, with that, she and Lisa, you guys good? Good. It's in head nods in here, so.
Yeah. Feel better. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, folks. I think we are gonna adjourn our regular, uh, work session and we will convene downstairs for our regular session as soon as we
We begin today, they don't do that flag, but whoa, 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 the flag is back there.
Valued to the full degree and we're very thankful that this isn't that type of an organization. And so for Classified Employee Appreciation Week, I acknowledge the presence of President Hanson of Hillsborough Classified Union, and it's an honor to read this. In honor of Classified Employee Appreciation Week, March sixth through tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Board of Directors would like to thank the over one thousand, three hundred people who fill the critical roles of educational assistants, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance technicians, custodians, office support staff, and many others for the Hillsborough Schools. Your often unsung work behind the scenes, supportive teachers and delivering instructions, diverse talents, and tireless dedication to our community students is invaluable. Your contributions to the Hillsborough School District are valued and appreciated. Please join us in thanking our classified staff and recognizing their in Classified Employee Appreciation Week. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of March sixth through tenth, two thousand and twenty-three to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of classified employees to the development and prosperity of our Hillsborough School District community. From the Board of Directors.
You. Next proclamation, I believe, is Director Allen online?
That's me. All right. This proclamation is for Women's History Month. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, no, we cannot hear you. And I suddenly can't hear myself really either. We, we are trying out some new equipment today, so give us a second. Can you try speaking one more time for us?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, this is our proclamation for Women's History Month. The Hillsborough School District celebrates women of every race, class, and background that have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our community in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. The Hillsborough School District honors women that have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of our community by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that women have played a unique role throughout the history of our community by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the community and school district. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that women have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of March, two thousand and twenty-three to be Women's History Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of women to the development and prosperity of our community.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval of the agenda. Would one of my colleagues like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors appoint, approve the agenda as printed.
I will second.
I think Patrick beat you to it by a hair.
Sorry.
It's been, been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? The motion carries. Next item is audience time. Rose, do we have anybody? Or nothing? All right. Cool. Um, there's a little inclement weather out there, so maybe. Uh, all right. Our next item would be the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second. The move by Director Ward and seconded by Director McGuire that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any further discussion? Is there any objection? Motion carries. Moving on to action items. Uh, Michelle, good news on our front, huh? I think that you're up for, oh, oh, she had to go? Okay. Uh, so the Budget Committee, I think Budget Committee's first, right? For the boundary? Okay. Uh, the Budget Committee still has one opening remaining. There were two openings after the most recent appointments. We had one application, uh, to fill one of those two vacant positions and former uh, Board of Directors member Kim Strelchen and former Budget Committee member uh, has applied for that position. So I would move that the Board of Directors appoint Kim Strelchen to position seven on the Budget Committee, which expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved by me and seconded by Director Allen that the Board of Directors appoint Kim Strelchen to position seven on the Budget Committee, which expires on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there any further discussion?
Patrick, just to say that I think the fact that we have a director emeritus on our Greek film committee and now a director emeritus on our Budget Committee is a testament that how much this community cares about our schools. So I thank them for their experience in the world.
I second that. And thank you Director Strelchen for agreeing to serve again. Uh, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Uh, next up is the discussion about the attendance boundary changes as a result of the new Tamarack. Adam has a microphone. All right.
I think so. Yes?
Yep, you good?
All right, very good. Um, yes, one of the last major, uh, projects of our bond is the construction of Tamarack Elementary School in South Hillsborough. Um, and because we have a new school there, we need to redraw some attendance boundaries. So I'm going to go over a presentation tonight that we shared with the three impacted schools. Uh, Witch Hazel Elementary School, um, Rosedale Elementary School, and of course Tamarack. So, um, before you is a presentation showing the current boundaries. Um, the pink is the Witch Hazel Elementary School boundaries. And the brownish greenish color is the current Rosedale Elementary School boundary. So there is Roast, or Witch Hazel Elementary School. The current boundary. Next. And here is the current enrollment for, for, uh, Witch Hazel Elementary School. We have four hundred and thirty-three students currently within those boundaries. And we're projecting that next year we will have four hundred and forty-nine students in the Witch Hazel attendance band. There's a note there at the bottom that a portion of, uh, the Witch Hazel uh, attendance area to the south, uh, kind of in the little boot section, uh, is where the new Witch Hazel Village South development will be.
Did you get right up on top of that microphone, Adam?
So the, the area to the south, the very bottom there that looks kind of like a boot, that is the, the upcoming development of Witch Hazel Village South. And we're anticipating, we're good. Okay. Uh, we're anticipating between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and sixty students, K six students as a result of that development. So just keep that in mind as we go through this presentation. So next is the current Rosedale Elementary Attendance Area. And as you can see, we have, uh, as you can see, I hope, because I can't. Uh, we have four hundred and, thank you, four hundred and thirty-nine students. We're projecting five hundred and eleven students there uh, within those boundaries next year. Next, please.
And, and these projections would be if we didn't change them for Tamarack? Okay.
Correct. So we have three proposed adjustments that we're going to show you. Could you start that slide over again? Because I want the board to see what we're proposing here. If you look at this, the, the pink area is going to come in. And at the very south end, it turns brown. That is the adjustment that we're proposing. There are currently only three students that live in that area. Next year, there'll be two students that live in that area. Um, but by the time the Witch Hazel Village South development comes in, we're projecting a hundred thirty to a hundred and sixty kids. So by moving that area out of the Witch Hazel Attendance Area, we're able to basically maintain the attendance that's currently at Witch Hazel. Um, and also subsidize some of the Rosedale attendants that we're going to be moving into the, um, Tamarack area. So that's adjustment number one. Next, please. The blue area, this is everything in the current Rosedale, uh, attendance area to the east of sixty-seventh and two twenty-nine. So. So basically, all of the new South Hillsborough development. There are currently 128 students in that attendance area. Next please. So we're calling this Attendance Area, or Adjustment 2A. And this is the portion of the Rosedale Attendance Area that is to the north of TV Highway. But to the east of Brookwood. So, um, as you can see, we have a pretty good section of, uh, the Rosedale Attendance Area that's to the north of TV Highway. We're proposing to move the area that is to the, uh, east of Brookwood uh, to become part of the Tamarack Elementary School Attendance Area. That adds an additional 74 students to that attendance area. Next please. So with all of those proposals, this is what the new boundaries would look like. The pink again is Witch Hazel. The brownish, greenish area is Rosedale and the blue area is Tamarack.
And confirming that, confirming that each school then will average about 600 capacity and that would put them at a lower capacity, but space to grow.
They will have a capacity of 600. They will have actual enrollment below that number, yes. Yes, with, with room at each site for additional students. Yes. Okay.
Wow.
So, uh, let's go ahead to the next slide. I think we have a breakdown of what the so again, this is what the Witch Hazel attendance would look like with these new boundaries. Next please. This is what the Rosedale attendance would look like with those new boundaries. 331 students after we move all of those students to the new Tamarack Elementary School, but we're also anticipating that 130 to 160 new students from the Witch Hazel Village South area. And then finally, the blue area is the Tamarack Elementary School Boundary.
Um, question.
Yes.
Uh, from a staffing teacher and staff perspective, did we, did we get to hire more? No, or did we just move everybody?
We haven't done anything yet. But yes, that, this won't replay.
The students are already here.
Yes.
We just need to rearrange the staff.
Okay, so the staff are going to be rearranged along with the students?
Yes. That's correct.
Okay.
The one other thing we should, that we talked about with the groups that we met with regarding the boundaries, um, are that there is also some discussion about some additional district programming um, that may go into the Tamarack Elementary School. Um, so I don't know what those are at this point, uh, but I think we do have capacity at that school for some of those additional district level program. Here.
Microphone please. Yes.
May I know?
Yes.
Okay. Um, we, um, actually I think just put out notification last week, I think in your, uh, board update, but we will be moving, um, K-8 HOA over into the Tamarack location to utilize um, some space there for our K-8 part of HOA. Hillsborough Online.
Okay. Nice.
So that is the proposal. We shared this, uh, initially on November 17th uh, with the group that is outlined, uh, in Appendix 1 of the Board Packet. Those are all the members that were present. Um, we had a follow-up meeting on December 1st. Um, we then took the proposal to, and we got very little feedback. I mean, we had lots of questions, but no changes at that point to the proposal. Uh, we then had meetings with both uh, Witch Hazel Elementary School, uh, PTO Group and the Rosedale Elementary School PTO Group. Um, ran this by all of them. Uh, again, lots of questions, but no changes were proposed. Um, and we also shared this on both the Witch Hazel, Rosedale, and the School Bond websites, um, with the same presentation. We had a total of 821, uh, separate views of the, uh, proposal, both in English and Spanish. Um, we have not received any negative comments regarding this, so.
What about, what about staff?
Well, we had staff and we had district level staff and building level staff uh, as a part of those two committees and have not had any negative comments.
Okay.
Um, Audrey was a part of that. Who else was there? Lindsay was there. The, the principals involved were there.
Okay, so it's no surprise teachers know that they're gonna be moving along with the kids.
There was opportunities for everybody who wanted to say something to say something, yeah. Um, it, it seems to be, um, something that is gonna work for both, so. Happy to answer any questions regarding the process or the proposal.
I'm a little bit curious about the, um, the portion between Brookwood and Imlay there above TV Highway. It's, it's kind of a small little L shape and I assume what the the portion, um, between Drake and Golden that's not, uh, part of this is a different, uh, elementary school that's not being changed, I assume.
Correct.
I'm curious kind of why we drew that tiny little L. Is it just because we wanted to get the numbers very precise, but?
We were taking the existing Rosedale Elementary School Boundary and moving a portion of it to, uh, the Tamarack Elementary School. So the little L piece is currently attending Rosedale. But, um, but you're correct, it is to move some additional students into that new school. I would say that at some point when we build the next school in South Hillsborough, um, we have talked in the past about trying to move all of those students to the north of TV Highway to either Brookwood or, or potentially W.L. Henry, um, so that they're not crossing, um, the highway. At this point, we just, we, we don't have the student, or we, we need the students um, within those buildings that we've assigned them to at this point, so. But I think that is something that at some point in the future, we'll probably want to look at is moving those students so they don't have to cross TV.
Do you know how many students are in that L shape and how many are in the cutout that's not part of the L shape in that?
Yeah, there's 74 students in the blue area, the L-shaped area. Yeah, um.
How many are in this little area?
And is Imlay already at capacity?
Curious.
Imlay?
Yeah. Cause it feels like that's Imlay there on that side, maybe Brookwood the other one, I don't know.
All of the brown area there is Brookwood. Nothing we proposed impacts Imlay.
Right. What I'm asking is that, is that little L? If we, where would they, where else would they go? Is that probably Imlay or they go to Brookwood?
Brookwood.
Oh, they would all go, everything north there would go to Brookwood?
Yeah.
And there's plenty of capacity at that building, yeah.
There is at this point, yeah.
And isn't it also true that that triangle that happens not to be on?
The triangle that he's talking about, those students were moved when Rosedale was open? Is that correct?
They have been moved a couple of times, yes.
Which is one of the reasons that we want to guard against moving them again.
Part of what the information we shared with the Boundary Committee as we started this process was some, uh, guiding principles that we worked with. One of them was we don't want students to have to change feeder groups. Another one was we tried not to separate, um, neighborhoods. So we didn't want to draw a boundary that meant kids on one side of the street went or next door neighbors would go to different schools. The other one was we didn't want to impact neighborhoods that had been moved in the past. So.
I really appreciate that. I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness that you put in this whole process. I just, it was so precisely drawn that it caught my attention. I appreciate you taking the time.
Yeah, and that, and it immediately jumps out, that north of TV Highway immediately jumps out, the whole, all the way across, especially even the little pink on the
Yep.
Far west side.
Just, I guess I should say this happens to be very close to where I live, so I, I'm especially interested in the area.
We had several community members who were on our committee that were also very interested. And one of the other things that we've talked about with the committee is that there will be opportunities, because we have capacity at all three of these schools, there will be opportunities if, for instance, those two students at Witch Hazel that are in the area that's gonna move to Rosedale, if they don't want to go to Rosedale, um, we can certainly accommodate them.
They can just apply and, yeah. Uh, I should have mentioned this a long time ago, but I know there's no board member on the committee like there was with North Plains.
We actually put the word out for anybody who was interested in participating and we didn't.
None of us.
Get in.
Okay.
Well, there you go. Volunteers.
We'll follow in the sword for that.
But you do get to weigh in.
Sure, great. Okay. All right, any other questions for Adam? All right, I guess, uh, are we ready for someone to make a motion?
Sir, I move that the Board of Directors approve the new Tamarack, Rosedale, and Witch Hazel Elementary School Attendance Boundary as proposed by the Tamarack Elementary Boundary Adjustment Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors approve the new Tamarack, Rosedale, and Witch Hazel Elementary School Attendance Boundaries as proposed by the Tamarack Elementary Boundary Adjustment Committee. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, thanks for all your hard work, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
You getting a little short timer's disease or no? No? All right, he's here.
Wait, are, are you, are you and Mike, are you guys planning a party together or something?
Uh, no, he, uh, Adam's the cap, Adam transitioned to the cap, and he's, it's been long known he's planning to retire as soon as his project's complete.
Oh.
So Adam will be retiring when all the bond funds have been spent? Is that essentially right? All right. Yeah.
Well, Mike, you wait until all the bond, all the bond money is. Okay, yeah.
All right, next up, uh, I think we've talked about this enough. Uh, Cona, is there anything else you would like to add about the calendar adoption?
Well, Mark. Keep it working. I think that suffice to say that, yes, we are at a point where we're ready to adopt the calendar for the 23, 24 school year. I'm very excited for this day.
Anybody have any questions for Cona? I will share that I, uh, so since we've had our discussions, many discussions, I have gotten feedback from more than one person saying, I work in the Beaverton School District, you're not aligned with them. Is it, so I, I did let people know that, uh, we previewed future calendars that they can look at Board Pockets. I pointed them to our discussions that we've had in our board meetings and the timestamp in our videos on YouTube. So, um, it, it feels like it's something we are working towards, it's just not in this current calendar.
Correct, based on feedback from our community.
Right. Right. But yes, I have heard from our community that they would love to see us be aligned with nearby districts for what's worth. So. I explained, not this year. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the 2023, 2024 school calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors adopt 2023, 2024 school calendar. Is there any further discussion? We don't need to say it as like reference in the packet or whatever, it's just, it's clear. It's calendar we've been discussing. All right, I feel that's fine, okay. Rose, can you call the roll please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. The motion carries. All right.
Thank you, Cona.
Yes, thank you for all your work on the calendar. We don't have discussed it for another like three months.
Yes. Been a while.
Uh, all right, next up is curriculum adoptions, high school courses. Okay, Travis, you have anything you want to add? We, we heard about these last time, I think?
Has been no comment or questions about those, uh, proposals.
Oh. All right. Somebody have any questions for Travis regarding the three courses we're discussing or we discussed last night?
No, but my question is do we have to do separate motions? We do, thank you.
We do, okay. All right, uh, would anybody like to make the first one?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course AP World History.
Second.
The move by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course AP World History. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Language Abinitio.
Second.
The move by Director McGuire and seconded by, is that Director Allen? Was right, okay. Uh, that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Language Abinitio. Is there any further comment? All right, Rose, can you call the roll please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries.
I move that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Psychology.
Second.
The move by Director McGuire and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors approve the proposed course IB Psychology. Is there any further discussion? Rose, can you call the roll please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. I move that the Board of Directors decline to hear the Step 4 complaint by Justin Hayden.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Just sad for those watching, I know it can be confusing when we have to vote on something that we, um, previously considered the details of in executive session, but everyone should trust that great, uh, attention has been given to these matters.
Thank you. Rose, can you call the roll please?
Lisa Allen.
Aye.
She and Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye. Motion carries. Just coincidental that all of the beginning of the alphabet is online and all the rest are here. How about that? All right, uh, reports and discussions, Beth, you have something in the packet and something in the folder area, right?
That is correct, yes. And we have our strategic planning consultant Lauren Clafkew joining us on the virtual meeting.
Welcome, thank you.
Hello.
She is gonna go through the, uh, slideshow presentation that was available to you in your Board of Directors folder. And then also, this is, um, a draft of the four-page collateral piece that will be available to the public once the plan is final. This, this is just a draft. It just gives you a sense of of how the design is shaping up and kind of what types of information are going to be included in this piece. There will also be a full strategic plan that will be presented to you on March 14th for first reading. But I'll just hand it over to Lauren and let her take you through the presentation.
So, sorry, one second. So just, uh, to be clear, so the draft of the four pages, the thing in our packet that starts on page 50. So if anybody wants to look at it, but yeah, so it's, it's the four pages, 50, 51, 52, 53.
Right, and I, I believe what we're gonna start projecting is the actual, uh, presentation.
Yeah, I'm gonna start just with this and then we'll move to the presentation page 19. Yeah. So we wanted to, good evening, everyone. Uh, we wanted to give you an update on, uh, where we are in So we wanted to, good evening, everyone. Uh, we wanted to give you an update on, uh, where we are in the draft, uh, the strategic plan. Um, all of the content has been, uh, developed. And we have, um, begun the drafting phase. And this is the opportunity, uh, we want to have a chance for the board to ask questions, engage and, um, before we bring the final, um, draft, uh, to you for a full review on March 14th. Uh, this is just the beginning. Does it see it all, uh, laid out? This is a draft, um, of a four pager, which is the usually the outward facing product for the larger community. Um, it begins by, um, showcasing your students and, um, and the promise statement that, um, has been drafted as a part of the process. So, um, the promise to know value and empower every student in the Hillsborough School District. You can go to the next, um, next page. Um, this lays out in your printout like a center spread. So I don't know if we can do a two-page view. I might pull up the PowerPoint. Um, but this opens up and presents out, um, can you do the two-page view of this, Rose? If not, we'll go to the, we can shift over to the PowerPoint. It would be easier to read. Yeah. So this is, you have it at your, um, desk. I'll walk you through with the PowerPoint, but wanted to just kind of ground in this because all of the key pieces and elements are in that, um, PDF. Uh, to kind of see the overview of the plan in its entirety. Um, you can go ahead and just pull up slide 19.
Can you hear me? One thing while we're waiting for the slideshow presentation to come up, hopefully you'll realize and, um, I appreciate Travis for helping me pull together a kind of a sub-team of designers here within the Hillsborough School District that will be working on how this plan kind of breaks apart and is utilized in other ways throughout our district for school-based improvement plans and for our integrated guidance reporting. And for visuals that will be, you know, available kind of down to the micro level within schools. There was a desire to mimic the shape of the leaf on our apple. And so we had a few different meetings with the designer. And if you look back at that center spread, you'll see that, that she has created a very, the similar design for those callouts for our, kind of our four major goal areas of self-empowered learners, collaborative communicators, and it has that shape of the leaf. So there's been a lot of intention in making sure that we have some elements that are replicable throughout our plan and then also making sure that the images we use are widely representative of our community and, uh, things like that. So I just thought I'd share that while we were waiting. Looks like we've got it.
Okay. I bent the slide. So, uh, to go to slide 20, I'm, I'm skipping. You have the full PowerPoint. Um, we've gone over it quite a few times. So we wanted to just, um, cut to the, um, the focus here. Um, as a reminder, uh, we've gone through and completed the, the three-step process, starting with, um, an examination of student data. Um, really an analysis and discovery of what that data has shared for us and shown us. But where we are as a district and what our steps forward, um, shall be as a result. Um, over the course of the planning process, we've had over six planning teams, six months of meetings, over a hundred. Um, you know, hundreds of community stakeholders, um, families, staff, community members, leaders, partners, participating. Um, and so we're excited, uh, to be able to present the, the fruition of that work. You can go to the next slide. The plan is organized in three sections. The first section focuses on the ends that we seek, um, intentionally focusing on what we are aiming for in terms of student learning. And it has four components. One is the promise statement. Uh, the second is the portrait of a graduate, the third are the goals and measures of student success, and then the fourth will be the performance benchmarks. The second section of the plan is focused on specifically on instruction. What are the instructional capabilities that we're going to develop across the system? The teaching practices, leadership practices and organizational practices. And all of those are on the foundation of the four pillars, which are really the building blocks that provide the framework for the plan and how to organize all of the adult action, all of the, um, strategic priorities. And then that leads us to our strategy map, which outlines the strategic priorities, um, for implementation. And the key actions associated with those. You can go to the next. Uh, and one more forward. So our promise statement to know value and empower every student. Um, this statement, um, was shared as, um, part and has gotten some feedback across the community with a survey that was put out. Um, and, uh, we can share a little bit about, um, some of the things that came up with that, uh, this might go through an evolution, um, before we, uh, meet again. Um, the, the main piece of feedback was feeling like the, uh, question about excellence, um, and academic excellence in particular, um, in the current, uh, uh, mission statement would be helpful to kind of integrate that into this in some capacity. Um, so that was something that we noted and are, um, looking at, uh, weaving again. Next statement. My next slide, sorry. Uh, we have our portrait. Um, there are four qualities in the Hillsborough, um, uh, School District Portrait of a Graduate. Uh, where all students are prepared for career college in life. There are empowered learners, inquisitive scholars, collaborative communicators and community contributors. And within, and there's, you can see the leaf element, uh, that Beth was, um, sharing. Go ahead and to the next slide. Each of those, um, uh, qualities has a, uh, list of attributes which help to describe and illustrate, um, what it will look like. And you know, what are the skills and um, knowledge and kind of dispositions that students will develop over the course of their K-12 uh, career in the Hillsborough School District. And we can go to the next slide. And then, um, for the duration of this plan, there are five goals, uh, that are the, the foundation, um, for student success. The first goal, number one is focused on success in the early years, where every student will acquire the social, emotional readiness and foundational academic skills for future success. Will have safe and supported learners, where every student will develop the habits and skills necessarily necessary to confidently demonstrate self and social awareness, access available resources, support, access and opportunity, every student receiving equitable treatment and needed supports and services in order to eliminate barriers and increase predictability of future success. Goal four, critical thinking and problem solving. Every student will be empowered, engaged, critical creative thinker who demonstrates proficiency across content areas. And finally, every student graduating ready for career, college and life. Um, every student will successfully navigate the significant transitions with access to support to graduate from high school, ready for career, college and life. For each of these, um, we can go to the next slide. For each of these, uh, goals, there are a, uh, series of metrics or measures, uh, that will be, uh, the indicators, right, of progress towards those goals. And so those have been, uh, refined through, um, discussion, uh, over the course of the last month or so and have been aligned as well with, um, the requirements from ODE. I know, um, uh, Travis will be able to speak too. Um, you'll see that the focal student groups, uh, currently, it says TBD. Once the metrics are approved, part of the process is to then go and identify where are, uh, the consequential disparities in terms of student outcome or access um, related to those measures. And that would be what would, um, indicate who the focal student groups would be for each of those measures. You can go to the next slide. Um, this is a reference that was added in, might not be in your printed packet. Um, and, uh, this is, uh, it's just a note on the focal student groups. This is taken from an internal document, um, that has all of the metrics outlined for the ODE, uh, framework. And, uh, we can go to the next one. And then finally, uh, these are a set of, uh, performance targets, uh, that have been identified. Uh, again, referenced from that internal document, um, of performance target one being around third grade reading. Performance target two being around regular attendance. Performance target three, extracurricular participation. Target four, ninth grade on track. And target five, four-year graduation and five-year completion rate. So these would be the areas that would be, um, set with a target for 27, uh, 28 for that school year, as well as having the focal student groups. Um, we can go ahead.
Lauren, can I, this is Travis. Can I?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, just, I had volunteered to speak to those slides just for one second. The, um,
Yeah, go back.
Just so the board knows, the TBDs there are, have been decided. We've looked at the data for each one of the performance targets. We're refining the language that we use to identify the focal groups because we want to be really intentional about, um, how we identify groups that we'll focus on for the duration of this plan. And then these five categories and six goals that are embedded here are the goals that are required under SIA in the state of Oregon. So the legislation that went with the student investment account requires us to, uh, develop longitudinal performance targets for these goals here. And so I really, I want to appreciate, um, both Beth and Lauren for adapting the performance fact strategic planning process to account for what we're obliged to do in Oregon as a school district, um, under the integrated guidance that we're doing. So in March, you'll see some targets that look like little comets with a star and then a bunch of lines that show focal groups of students making gap closure tech growth over the next four years. And I, um, shout out to Director Lopez, who had asked, can we look at the data and then decide how to close gaps during literacy and grad rate between different groups of students? So that's what the board will see, um, when they come back with, uh, more complete draft. So I'd, TBD isn't pushing this off. It's, uh, just being refined right now. The way that we show that data and show the focal groups when we come around next time. Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you, Travis. Very good. Um, so that encompasses circle number one, um, the outlining, you know, for student, uh, learning. And then we move to instructional effectiveness. And, uh, you have four pillars that you have identified. It could be the framework for the guiding all the actions taken as a part of the strategic plan. You can go to the next slide. So there are, oh, I kind of fell off the page. Um, sorry about that. So there are four, uh, pillars. We have culturally responsive teaching and learning. We have a strong and safe, uh, family and community relationships, exceptional staff and a culture of continuous improvement. Those pillars are further defined on the next slide with some descriptive statements to help, um, illuminate, um, what, what we mean by those. You can go ahead to the next slide. Um, and these, uh, statements and these, uh, pillars are what undergird all of the action, both, uh, in terms of the focus for the instructional program as well as, um, all of the strategic actions that'll be part of the empowering infrastructure. You can go to the next slide. The next three, uh, slides focus on what are the professional practices that need to be developed in order to support effective implementation of the plan. It's very often that, um, districts and school systems will focus on what are the programs that we offer. Um, and not as much on what are the capacities and the practices that we want to develop to ensure that all, um, all of our students are experiencing the effective instructional environments. And so if you go to the next slide, as part of this plan, um, there are, uh, eight teaching practices that have been identified. Um, and they, these are teaching practices. They're not necessarily fully owned by somebody in a teacher role. Um, and so it's written to reflect that educators working with students, um, in a teaching capacity, uh, would be all supported in, uh, the growth and development on these core practices. You can go to the next slide. Then based on what's been identified for the focus on teaching, um, there's an associated set of practices that are to support the leaders' growth and development, the capacity building of the leaders across the system that will help ensure the teaching practices will be developed, um, coherently across the system as well. And then finally, there's on the next slide, we have the organizational practices. And so this is what needs to happen district-wide, to support both the leaders and the teachers to ensure the success of all students towards the goals outlined in the plan. We suggest and we elevate, um, instructional practice to its, um, to a particular, um, higher elevation than all other functions of a school district based on the research around future efficacy and the importance of what's happening between student, teacher, um, and content and the relationships that are happening in those in the classroom setting. Go to the next slide. Finally, we take a look at the empowering infrastructure. And we do this by looking at what is the, you know, what is the strategic map about how we will, um, achieve the goals and, um, and ensure that all of our students, uh, make it home, so to speak. You can go to the next slide. Um, you have a strategy map where there are three strategic priorities that have been identified, um, for each of the pillars. So when we talk about teaching and learning, culturally responsive teaching and learning, there are three strategic priorities, having an aligned instructional system, having relevant personalized learning, ensuring belonging and engagement. And that's for pillar A. If we go across to pillar C, when we talk about exceptional staff, there are three different priorities, right? We have a priority that's around a workforce reflective of our community, systems of staff development and sustainable retention of staff. So for each of these quadrants, right, um, for these pillars, there are a set of key actions that are designed to, um, support the system's attainment of these priorities. You can go to the next page. And so for each area, this one for pillar A, or each kind of slice of the pie or the clock, uh, there are system-wide key actions that have been identified. Um, that will be aligned to these key priorities as well as equity specific key actions. The targeted actions that are focused on ensuring that we have not only measures that we're paying attention to in terms of gap closing measures, but also that we have specific strategies in place and actions in place to ensure that we actually, we achieve those uh, measures. So we can, um, this has been shared. We can move through these, these four pages. Um, so there's, there's a great deal, right, to take a look at and review. Uh, if we scroll forward. Um, you can get down to the slide. This is for, um, pillar B, which is all about recognizing that schools can't do it alone. And this is our working with family and community. Go to the next slide. Uh, pillar C, professional staff, our capacity buildings, um, slide, and then pillar D, go forward. That's right here. So, um, I think we can go to the next slide. So the last part of the, the final step, once we get things, um, uh, pieced together and kind of give a thumbs up on this is, is outlining what is the roadmap for discipline implementation. And we suggest that, um, uh, the organizing framework that we found to be most helpful in supporting our clients and, and considering implementation is around using the calendar as the organizing framework. And so we have just, and we'll, once this is, um, approved, we'll have just completed this system-wide strategic plan. And then there are key actions that we recommend each, um, school district will build and develop as part of their implementation. So ensuring that alignment of the annual school improvement plan, um, looking at what's happening every week, what's happening every month in terms of the professional learning, what's happening at key intervals in terms of, um, reflecting on data, gathering that data, board review of data, et cetera. Um, and then, so this is the framework that we'll go ahead and, uh, be taking a look at to complete a more personalized version of this for, um, for Hillsborough. Once the plan is complete, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. Um, so this is where we are. We have, this is the draft for you as a comment. We're here to answer questions. Uh, we're going to review your feedback, um, and we have, uh, to refine the plan. And then we're going to bring in the final full draft um, for the board meeting on the 14th. Um, so I will stop there and open it up for any, um, further comments or things that Beth might want to share, elevate. I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Beth, do you have anything you want to add?
Um, one thing that it might be nice to have some feedback on, if you kind of toggle back to look at the four-page document that we put in the packet, you'll see on the back page right now, there's kind of a blank space there. Initially, they had had some, um, like a demographic breakdown of students. Uh, it's page 53 in your packet. Um, and I just felt like that's just going to be immediately out of date. And I'm not sure that that's the most high-value info to have there. But I would be really curious to get some, um, suggestions and input on what might be kind of a high-value add, something to put there. And possibly it's just referencing, uh, some friendly link. URLs on our website. I'm not sure, like our district's uh, URL slash strategic plan or slash metrics or something like, I don't is, would that be more useful? Or if you guys can think of something there that would be really great to put there, that feedback would be helpful. And also, should we keep Mike's name on there or put the new super on there? I don't know about that, like.
Do we need an eraser or?
There. Sorry, Monique. Yes?
No. What section are you talking about? Where?
Page 53 in. Page 53 in your packet. Now, if you go back to the packet, it's the four-page. It's the four-page community-facing doc draft that we first had up.
There's that white box.
Yeah, it says resources right now.
They're going to change constantly.
But yeah, so that's why I was just looking for feedback on what we might put there.
So we can send that to you, right?
Erica has her hand up.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I do like the, the ability to show our demographics on there, but I do think that every year that changes. So having a link might be more useful or, what is it? One of those short?
Yeah, we can do friendly mappings so that, yeah, we can name it and then pop it to a specific page.
Yeah, or QR code, something that's easy.
I, I think the only thing I was thinking is that if we have a chance to tout the complete or the totality of our diversity, that would be a really great place to put, put it, even if it's a couple of links to show that demographic or whatever you think really shows off and really capsulates the fact that we are probably the most diverse district and state. Sorry, I just think we ought to brag. This is, this is it. I mean, we're going to be following this for the next. And more importantly, this is our roadmap for the person we're about to hire.
I haven't spent a lot of time pondering what the target audience of this executive summary is. So this summary, this is off the top of my head, but my personal inclination is that I would like some level of top-level metrics in every piece of what we produce those pieces in. So that's just my opinion. I don't, we don't have any numbers in this at all. I think as community members, when I talk about strategic plan, they very often want to know the bottom line. What is our goals? How are we implementing this practically?
And will we be like, so all of the research, all of, so the strategic plan is the larger document?
It's the guiding document. Yeah. So the thought would be that this and the full plan would live kind of and be the same for four years.
Right.
And then how we report on that on our periodic basis and annual basis, those would exist separately from these kind of pretty collateral pieces that you hand to people that kind of describe your vision, right?
Yeah, the four pages, like the thing we hand out at.
Yeah.
Proud to be HSD.
We could certainly create like little annual reports, one-pagers or something, front and back, that would have kind of the metric summary, like this is our metric summary for 2324, right, that we could create like in the summer of 2024, for example. So. Yeah. And so what we just went through in the PowerPoint slides. So that would be more of the content that's in the full plan.
It's in the full plan.
So somebody who's willing to read a 12-page document or a 15-page document as opposed to a four, then that's where they'd get that detail.
But more often than not, like at an event or something, we'd be handing out the four pager.
Right. And, and it would have the link to get to our full plan, to get to our kind of dashboard where you can see our progress, things like that.
So people have input on the graphical layout for that last page? They should just email you suggestions, right?
That would be just fine. Yep.
Otherwise, we trust you.
Okay. The nice thing is you guys will be, you know, so we are in alignment with all of our different timelines and whatnot. You are getting the full plan in March and we'll take action on that. You know, we're not planning for it to really officially go into effect until July 1st. So there is time for some of that fine tuning. It's not that it will substantively change, but it gives us an opportunity to say, well, we thought we liked how that looked, but let's tweak that a little bit. So.
The collateral plan model, right? Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Beth or suggestions or for Lauren? Lauren, I don't know if you're still with us. I think you're East Coast. Maybe you're asleep.
No, I'm here. Yes.
This is incredible to think that we started out.
You were on it, right?
Yeah, we started out at Liberty High School in the library with a bunch of post-it notes. And it, it's really, 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 really incredible that we are where we are. So thank you for your leadership, Beth. Thank you for the brain power behind what they're doing. This is really awesome.
Thank you for being the board's biggest time commitment on.
On that, yes. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Michelle is not here, but you have the, what's that? Oh, she's online. Well, there you go. Michelle, you are the next item for the financial report. Is there anything you would like to highlight or focus on? We have it in our packet.
Thank you, Chair Watson. No, I'm always happy to answer any questions that come up though, at any time about our board report. So you're welcome to email me. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions at this time for Michelle? Well, she didn't present the gold star slide. That was earlier. Although until she fixes the typo, it won't be a gold star table. It won't be a gold star chart.
Ouch.
Just kidding. All right. Back to Beth for our inter-district transfer plan.
Yes. So it is that time of year under House Bill 2747 that was passed way back 10 years ago in 2013. That is the legislation that dictates how we proceed with inter-district transfer requests. And it requires the board to take action and to announce A, whether or not the district will be participating in the process. And then if so, the how many students will be accepted into the district and how many students will be released from the district. So we have traditionally participated in this process and we have identified a time window that typically starts April 1st and closes on May 15th. And then that just gives us the opportunity to evaluate all of the other in-district transfer requests that have come in and to kind of finalize that before before the summer comes. And so principals can really finalize their staffing plans and things like that. So we usually just kind of give you a heads up at this point. And then at the March meeting, we both give you the detailed plan and ask you to take action on it. And that's because there really is a lot that goes into developing and checking with our principals, like where can you maybe accept some students and where can't you? We need to decide if there's any campuses that just really can't accept any inter-district transfer students and things like that. So you can see an example of the plan that was approved last year. I linked that in your packet. And that's what we're putting together right now. We have kind of all the preliminary data. We're going to share that with principals this Friday, discuss it with them on Tuesday, and then bring you the final plan on the 14th. We can tell you that we're recommending that we accept up to 120 inter-district transfer students and that we release up to 70 students. Last year, our numbers were 100 in and 50 out. So.
Yeah, and the example's pretty good from last year.
Yeah, we, we always identify, you know, as much as we can at each building, but then we kind of make it clear, like it's not that we're going to take that many at every school, like the, still the total's 100. And we're just kind of giving you the options of, of where that could take place and the kind of the upper bounds of how many students that would comprise. So.
So this is just our heads up. We'll be taking action at the next board meeting. Just a reminder, maybe if we end up with an abbreviated regular session next meeting, just try to get it to us early so that we can review it and not ask a bunch of questions during the meeting.
Yeah. And if you have questions, just procedural type questions, if you could let me know in advance and I can certainly answer those.
All right. So any questions for Beth at this point about the inter-district transfer process or plan? All right. Thank you. Our next agenda item is first reading of policies. The folks supporting those are all listed in your packet. I guess if you have questions regarding any of these, you should contact Michelle, Casey, and Jordan, it looks like. All right. Perfect. All right. HCU and HSA reports who would like to go first. All right.
Good evening, School Board, Chair Watson, Superintendent Scott, and Cabinet members. I am Melody Hanson and President of Hillsborough Classified United, and it's my pleasure to be here tonight and speak with you on behalf of HSD classified staff. I'd like to start by sending out a special message to the classified staff. Next week is Classified Appreciation Week. And I would like to express our appreciation of the classified staff of Hillsborough School District. Without you, our school, our students would not get to school. Students would not be supported in class and throughout their day, students would not get fed. Schools would not be cleaned and grounds would not be maintained. I would like to add that staff, classified staff do a variety of tasks within our district. Just a few of those. I presented a poster once before with this on it. So they clean it, cook it, fix it, drive it, paint it, type it, schedule it, plant it, file it. We support, love, and believe in our students. School work, schools work and students learn with classified employees on the job. And HCU appreciates you. Now, I would like to thank the School Board for the opportunity to provide feedback on the ongoing superintendent search. It is an honor to partner with you and we are thankful that the classified input has been sought after and valued in this process. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberation and action on behalf of all HSD stakeholders, our students, our community, and our staff. As we move into the spring and you begin to consider the budget for next biennium, we hope that you will continue to keep the needs of classified staff in mind. In the first half of the 2022-23 school year, we were forced to renegotiate multiple salaries, get multiple salary schedules in order to alleviate staffing crises in transportation and other departments. This comes only a few months after settling our 2021-2024 classified management agreement in May of 2022. This bargaining agreement included salary increases for all, as well as specific market adjustments for certain job categories. Yet staffing issues in many of these categories have persisted, preventing our district from providing the best quality education and experience for our students. Though there are many variables that impacting staffing shortages, our experience as a district shows us that the most effective solution is to raise wages. Our classified staff also, our classified staff have also spoken clearly and repeatedly about the need for wage increases that reflect the cost of living and the rate of inflation in our area. Currently, we are responding to those needs as our staffing situations rise to a crisis point. However, as we look ahead to a new budget and a new bargaining year right around the corner, we hope to address wage issues systematically and proactively. We know that staffing and budgeting for a large school district is a complex puzzle with many pieces. However, the classified workforce is one of the most critical ones. Our budget and wages should reflect the value we bring to our district in each of our varied roles. And we trust that you will keep this in mind as you consider your options for the upcoming biennium. As I wrap up my time this evening, I want to again express our gratitude for the collaborative process we've engaged in throughout the superintendent search. We trust in the leadership in our school, the School Board, and know that you keep the needs of our students, staff, and community at the heart of what you do. We look forward to continued partnership throughout this transition and we thank you for your time this evening. And I'd like to thank you for the kind words for the classified staff earlier in the meeting. Good evening, Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow board members, Superintendent Scott, and administrative leaders. We hope you managed to stay safe and warm as the snow fell across our state last weekend and the following days continued to be winter. It was fun to visit the students yesterday and learn what they did with their time at home. Brown Middle School students reported they played in the snow, slept, read a book, baked cookies, slept, played Fortnite, slept, played soccer, slept, and watched movies. It sounded like our students enjoyed themselves if they were tired. I know our teachers were and they happily welcomed us after snow days last week. As Black History Month comes to a close, I wanted to share HSA's Equity Chair, Leandre Dutler, had made it a priority to share the message that Black history is American history, which should be taught year-round. He also led our building reps in an article with the titled "The Dues and Belts of Teaching Black History." We encourage our building reps to share the article with our members with the goal of tightening their cultural awareness and enriching their future lesson planning. If you'd like to read it, I'd be happy to share it with you. We all work hard to ensure that every student belongs in our school. Sadly, this past month, we observed an increase in hate speech among our students. HSA is collaborating with HSD Equity Access and Engagement Team to address our concerns and provide guidance and training in how to respond when bullying, harassment, and bias can take place. I mentioned last month that it is vital not only for the sake of self I mentioned last month that it's not only vital for the sake of instruction, but it is vital for everyone's safety that students are where they're supposed to be during the school day. I'm thankful that all students and staff were that were impacted during yesterday's lockdown or sick. While we cannot control what happens in our neighborhoods, we can control what happens in our school building. Yesterday's incident was a reminder that this is a sense of place for when we have told them and our students are all accounted for throughout the school day. Speaking of student accountability, at the beginning of this semester, Hill High implemented a new Hill High implemented an initiative called the Student Punctuality Project. Teachers have reported that it really helped decrease tardiness throughout group parent communication and referral wedding. We hope that as they refine this process, they can share this initiative with other schools of history. The second week of February, we celebrated Councilor Appreciation Week. HSA hosted a week-long series of virtual counselor listening sessions to address concerns dealing with working conditions in workday. It was very well-attended and informative for HSA's advocacy efforts for our counselors. We at HSA are appreciative for being able to participate as an educator-focused group by sharing qualities and characteristics we want to see in our next superintendent. We look forward to participating in the next steps of the hiring process. We're also looking forward to the upcoming council listening sessions for Hillsborough Online Academy, Hillsborough High School, and Jackson Elementary. We hope that they're well-attended and that you receive information that guides the hiring process, if at all, for our educators, students, and parents. I attended the February 18th Joint Town Call with Oregon State Senator Janine Solomon and Representatives Susan McLean, who made me so sad. Thanks to Janine calling on me during the final five minutes of the meeting, I was able to share my concern for education and advocate for K-12 funding. I acknowledge that Governor Hoette listed education as one of the top three priorities and proposed $9.9 billion to fund education. We are thankful, and this is a fantastic start, but given the rising costs and ongoing workforce crisis, to fully operate Oregon Public Schools with stable funding for 2023, the 2023 budget for K-12 schools needs to be $10.4 billion. Ensuring a strong base is the top financial need when communicating with our legislators. Critical investments in special education should be $300 million. Special education is in crisis. There's not enough staff to support our students' special needs. Investment must be made to improve the long-term outcome. $300 million in additional, additional funding dedicated to sped programs will help put our system back on the path to support these students. Increase funding for poverty by $150 million. Students in some poverty continue to lack the supports in schools that are critical to their success. Students facing poverty continue to lack the supports in schools that are critical to their success. Increasing the amount of money for these students in this whole funding formula will help restrict the resource needed to support these students. Improve funding for recruitment, retention, a hundred million dollars. Staffing shortages are becoming more and more difficult to mitigate. Funding programs to support the recruitment and training of new staff is going to be critical for long-term success for our education. That was what I shared at the joint panel. Lastly, I'd like to thank all of you who have responded to my email invite to chat in a uniformed setting. I look forward to meeting with you to the scene. We are thankful to our classified for being the backbone of our education system. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Student representatives time. Who would like to go first? Kaylee went away.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to say. Just, you know, I'm really excited for tennis to start. Um, it was supposed to start last Thursday, but of course, no, picked in. So now we postponed it to like this Thursday. So I'm, I'm really excited to show, uh, you know, the liberty spirit, the Hillsborough School District spirit. Um, and yeah, thank you.
Um, I don't have much. I did, uh, the first part of my mock trial competition this weekend. Um, but due to the snow, instead of it happening in the actual courthouse, it was virtual, which is a little bit of a bummer. Uh, it also got split up into two weeks. So instead of all three competitions last Saturday, one is following this Saturday, which I am turning eighteen on, so I will not be there. Which is really unfortunate because my senior year, um, but that is all. That is my update. Thank you.
Thank you. For tennis time.
All right, just a few quick comments. First of all, classified employee week next week. Thank you. Um, I, I know we'll be putting word out next week, but thank you for everything that you do. I, I love your little phrase about fix it, paint it, drive it, all of that. It's very true. You really are the heart and soul of the district. So thank you for everything you do. Um, I also wanted to reflect just a minute in and think back on the SRO report that was given earlier in the night during the work session. Um, both Casey and Fran and her team, I just, the work they've done to make sure that the student resource officers are getting the professional development that we all had envisioned with our year-long process as we talked about this. And I, I think that deliberate work that we put in during that time is now paying off and we are, we just continue to improve that relationship and the scope of work that, that they provide. Um, Mary Kay, thank you for the advocacy that you're doing to legislative level. It is definitely going to take all of us. And, um, I know that as Beth and I have gone in and advocated in the past, they grow weary of seeing the same faces and hearing the same voices. So having your voice at the table and hearing some of the tape, some of the stories that you can provide is incredibly helpful. And I know our board members, as they advocate, they appreciate your support as well. So thank you for that. Um, if you see anyone that works at Transportation Center or a Carroll Hatfield, uh, thank them. Um, they are getting up super early every morning and, um, we're going to be up and at, while I don't drive the Prius around in the bad weather. Um, we do have a call at four-thirty tomorrow morning, so we'll be, I'm happy to call any of you if you want an update at four-thirty. Happy to do that. Maybe a text, okay. Um, anyway, we will continue to watch that and I just really wanted to appreciate the transportation staff, everything they do to keep our students safe.
Thank you. Board of Directors time. We can start online. Erica, do you have anything you would like to add tonight?
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thanks. Monique, anything you'd like to add tonight?
Nope, nothing tonight, I think.
All right, Patrick?
Briefly, I wanted to say, um, oftentimes when we think of day-to-day work, I, I often talk about what our, our classified and certified staff do. Um, when we think of our leadership team, we think of the strategic planning wise. But I wanted to say thank you to our, our leadership team for the work they did and they do ongoing on making day-to-day decisions when urgent situations come up, quickly responding. We've had major weather events that required decisions to keep everyone safe and, uh, well-instructed. We also had very urgent situations in the news without requiring lockdowns in schools. And the priority to make those decisions quickly in a way that keeps students safe, uh, I just want to thank all of you for, for taking that on and making decisions that way.
All right, uh, I just want to say happy classifieded, uh, rightly so. As you made that list, Nancy looked at me and went, that's a T-shirt. So feels like that's a T-shirt. Fix it. Sort of, yeah, it feels like that'd be a good T-shirt. I also wanted to thank Hillsborough Schools Foundation for such an amazing event on Saturday. It was fantastic to see so many faces there. Um, and to be in person for the first time in three years, I think, right? Uh, twenty-twenty was the last one for way too long during the pandemic. Like after my house burned down, I had no shoes or whatever. I, I, I like marked that date, February twenty-second, twenty-twenty was the last time I had worn dress shoes. So it was weird to like do it again. It was awesome. Uh, uh, I guess finally, the, the seventy-three-page document we got this afternoon, I'm only about halfway through it. Um, that I'm really, uh, enjoying reading the comments of our focus groups. Feedback on Hillsborough, the district, what we expect in supervisor, the kind of work we need to do. That the executive summary that we covered a little bit upstairs is great, but then digging into the sort of feedback of each group has been very rewarding. It, it was very interesting for me to see a lot of the ways I feel expressed in words I might not have chosen. So it was like, it was very illuminating for me to like go, oh, yeah. It, I feel like Hillsborough does kind of have like, we're the fourth largest school district in the state, but we have a little bit of a small-town feel. Some of that comes from the combination of urban and rural populations we have and the way we, so it just, uh, so I think you'll enjoy it when you get a chance to look through all that. And hopefully we'll have an update soon as to what the shape of our next few meetings will look like. Um, as we continue to conduct our superintendent search. So I, uh, thank you in advance for all the extra work you're about to do.
Mark?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but was she in?
Uh, they are not. She is, yeah, sure. All right. And with that, we are returned. Thank you.